I call to order the administrative meeting of the Burnley County Commission for Tuesday, March 12, 2019. We will begin tonight's meeting with a silent invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by a group of our visitors who are here to celebrate the Design Education Initiative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we are now on item three, Madam County Manager. Do we have any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, there's one change and it's item nine C, the DWI Planning Council appointment to be removed from the consent agenda, becoming item six A under board appointments. And a vote is required for the above change.
All right, so we would do just, you said nine C, one? Or both?
Because it's an item as a whole, I think the whole thing should be moved up.
All right, I move that we approve that change. That would be to take item nine C off the consent agenda and put it under item six board and committee appointments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have no proclamations tonight, but we do have some certificates and awards, and we have some very honored and special guests here from, who are part of the Mark Twain Elementary School project. So I'd like to invite all of you to come up to the podium. I will read the proclamation and then give you the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like, and then we'll invite you up here for a photograph. So this is a certificate of recognition for the Mark Twain Elementary School project. So this certificate of recognition is for the outstanding work and dedication to the teaching and mentoring of neighborhood children in collaboration of young and old, sorry, young and experienced alike, to improve the communities of Alvarado Park, Mark Twain, Mile High, and Fair West. The Alvarado Park, Mark Twain, Mile High, and Fair West neighborhoods grant proposal during the fiscal year 2018 program was, without exception, the most ambitious, involved, and most interesting in scope and participation of all the proposals received. The project, entitled "Design Education: A New Model for Integrated Learning," ran from November 2017 through May of 2018 and involved more than 200 neighbors, ranging from second graders to PhDs, in representing Alvarado Park, Mark Twain, Mile High, and Fair West neighborhoods. The project took 120 students from Mark Twain Elementary School, grades two through five, and immersed them in architecture projects with integrated curriculum, which combined science, technology, engineering, art, architecture, and math. Working with students were five Mark Twain teachers and 13 volunteers and professional architects. The program was co-sponsored by the American Institute of Architects Albuquerque Chapter and the School Zone Institute Architecture and Children's Program. In six months, the children learned about organizing a project, from the thought process to design to models. They also learned analysis, model planning and building, and even how it feels to be a building. Once the designs and models were finished, a final exhibition was held at the UNM School of Architecture and Planning, to which the neighborhood community and general public were invited. It was great appreciation and honor that we thank you and acknowledge your public service to your neighborhoods, community, and most of all, the future and education of the children of Burnley County's Mark Twain Elementary School. This was indeed a gift of time and a labor of love. And this was presented this day, March 12, 2019, and signed by all five commissioners. So again, we really appreciate and admire your work and just wanted to make sure you knew that. So you're welcome to tell us a little bit about the project. And I just want to highlight, this was a grant that was made through Burnley County's Neighborhood Grant Program, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner, all of the commission. I'm Darcy Bushnell, and I'm with the Alvarado Park Neighborhood Association. I'm the government liaison. And it was a real honor to be granted this money, to be able to help this project and the children who were involved. The architects learned a lot too, I'm sure, and the teachers, I think, had learned some as well. It was, I participated in some of the classrooms, and it was wonderful to watch the children use these different techniques and skills to come up with their final projects, which were to visualize how Tom Bullock Park could be improved. And that is the basis for their exhibits at the end of the year. Thank you again to all of you. It was an honor to serve, and the funding that you provided truly helped make this a successful project.
Well, first of all, I'd like to, Barbara, I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak, but I want to introduce everybody, including Maria Coran, who teaches at Mark Twain, and we wanted to thank you for being here too.
We're all here. I just wanted to say too, in addition to what Darcy so eloquently stated, that it was a great opportunity to unite different areas of the city too. I mean, there were four separate neighborhood associations involved in this, Mark Twain Neighborhood Association being but one of them. And I was encouraged by that. I mean, it took something like this to bring us together, and I certainly hope we will continue to do so. Thank you so much.
We do great work. I just want to introduce each of you. So we have Darcy Bushnell from Alvarado Park, and Cynthia Serna from Mile High, Barbara Loback and Joel Woodbridge from Mark Twain, and then Maria from Mark Twain Elementary. So thank you all for being here, and we have certificates for you, so please come up. We are now, we have, we, since we moved item nine C up, we are now on board and committee appointments. So we're going to have to alter this a little bit. This was published as two appointments. It's actually going to be just one. And so, Ken, I'm not sure how to handle this. Do we need to? So can we just, can I just nominate Paul Romo?
Madam Chair, we can just motion the item six A two and not motion the first one.
Okay. Well, then I will move approval of item nine C two, which would be the appointment of Dr. Paul Romo to the DWI Planning Council. Do I have a second? A second from Commissioners O'Malley and Talbert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Great. Now onto public comment. Julie, how many people do we have signed up?
We have three signed up.
All right, so I just want to remind everybody who's come to speak, you will have two minutes. A bell will ring after 90 seconds has elapsed, giving you 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. So Julie, we'll read the names. Please come forward when your name, when you hear your name.
Don Trader, Tad Nimenski, Brian Tremco.
122 of the 195 nations in the United Nations adopted the Nuclear Ban Treaty in July 2017, the first comprehensive ban on nuclear weapons under international law, making it illegal to develop, test, produce, manufacture, acquire, possess, stockpile, transfer, receive, use, or even threaten to use nuclear weapons. Nations cannot help, urge, support, or supply another nation to do any of those. No companies that build, no banks that finance, no investments that support nuclear weapons. Sadly, the United States opposes this treaty. Any wonder that many millions worldwide fear the U.S. government more than any other government on earth? Sandia and Los Alamos Nuclear Weapons Labs constantly commit massive international crimes against humanity. The U.S. spends $100 billion, not million, billion dollars this year for nuclear bombs if you pay federal income tax. How do you feel about paying to prepare for the largest mass murder and suicide in human history? Did most politicians and religious leaders in Nazi Germany publicly dam the concentration camps and gas ovens? We, we are responsible to speak truth against our nation's evil atrocities.
Thank you. My name Ted Nimenski. Well, I'm not much to Bible study, but I know a lot since growing up Catholic family, forced to go to, every Sunday to church. So anyway, here is speaking, listening about rewarding school projects. Now, these days, kids in college was forced, are forced to study sociology, psychology, political science. That is most important, of course, liberal arts. Why don't you study carnation, a little bit Bible, maybe you can get some wisdom. I'm talking to elected official. Now, let me state it here. I was mortified by et cetera, et cetera. And I also, he was, he denounced as disappointed. How about trip to Denmark? Her experiences in Denmark? If you love it, Denmark so much, why don't you go back even now? And that's right. Denmark is 14 worst economy on any country in the world. That is the Denmark when it comes to economy. Well, how about Venezuela or Cuba? I don't have time to enlarge all that issue. Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Brian Tremco. I'm with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I wanted to talk a little bit about Alvarado tonight. Number one, we love what you're trying to do to better serve your constituents. We think it's a great project and hope to see it go forward and be a great success. We do have some concerns though with the process. And in this process, we are not able to access the public records until such time as the project is awarded. That's a problem. How can we comment or evaluate something if we don't know the process and what's going on in the process? So we'd like to see the county hold off on an award until such time as they have cleared this up and made sure that the process is transparent for the public. Second, we'd like to see an opportunity for apprenticeship to be used on all public projects, not just this one, but all public projects. We should have certified apprentices, state certified apprentices, on any building that's being built, not only at the general contractor level, but at the subcontractor level, as well as having state certified journeymen on those projects to teach those apprentices. That way we get double value for our tax dollar. It just makes sense. And if we don't have that in any project we're doing, we're not being fair to our tax-paying constituents. We'd like to see compliance being enforced in a more accurate way. For example, it's very easy to misclassify workers. We say we have certified payroll to verify, but that doesn't really work. If you've got a project where you've got a carpenter working eight hours as a carpenter, and he's paid eight hours as a carpenter, but it's very easy to pay him four hours as a carpenter and four hours as a laborer or an iron worker, and cut the costs. And if your compliance officers don't recognize what those trades are, and they're not trained in that, they cannot successfully do the enforcement. And we have that problem going on throughout the whole country. So we need to work on training our compliance officers and making sure that that's happening in all cases. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. I believe that Commissioner Casada is going to join us by telephone, and while we are waiting for that, I want to ask Commissioner Talbert to read a couple of statements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Closed meeting, statement one, I offer the following statement regarding the closed litigation meeting held Tuesday, February 12, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on February 12, 2019, were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement. It will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
I move approval. You have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Closed meeting, statement number two, I move that the Burnley County Attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, February 12, 2019, at 3:00 p.m. Only those items described on the published notice and agenda for the closed meeting held on February 12, 2019, were discussed at the closed meeting. I need a motion for approval of this statement. It will become part of the minutes of this meeting.
I move approval. You have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Closed meeting, statement number two, I move that the Burnley County Attorney be authorized to proceed with the matters discussed in the closed meeting held on Tuesday, February 12, at 3:00 p.m., within the parameters set by this commission.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, we're now on to approval of the minutes. I move we approve the minutes of February 26, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioners Piscotti and O'Malley. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, we are now on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, may I have an administrative resolution number 49A?
Yes ma'am, 2019-24, AR 2019-24.
Thank you. And I think that's all. Great, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a second, and I just want to remind everybody, that is minus nine C. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right, we are now on item 10A. I move we approve the continuance of the 1/16th cent healthcare gross receipts tax increment through June 30 of 2024. You have a second?
Do we need a second to hear it?
Second, Madam Chair. We have a motion and a second. Shirley.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager for Finance. In January, we had initially brought this ordinance for your approval to publish the notice, and after further investigation, we realized that in the past, it had been approved two ways. One way was through amending the code, and the second was through amending an ordinance. So to be consistent with the practice, we want to republish the notice to amend the code. The healthcare GRT was enacted in 2006, and we use it to cover expenses for indigent care throughout the county.
Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Malley. Could you sort of detail what that means? Forrest, please. That's a pretty broad area, so.
In 2006, it was a gross receipts tax that was enacted, and the state constitution says that every five years, the governing body can come back and has to ask for a continuance of that funding. So right now, the current funding is through June 30 of this year, 2019. So the, what we're asking for now would start July 1, which would be fiscal year 2020 through 2024. So the funding, when I say indigent healthcare needs in the county, for example, we're currently funding the MDC, a portion of the MDC medical contract, where we take care of our inmates. We have utilities for the Wesley Building, where we have our, the public health building there. We do our methadone maintenance. We have the UNMH psychiatric contract for YSC, which is our youth services center. We also have the, for the department, for MATS, our, the Metropolitan Observation and Treatment Services contract that is with UNM as well, is funded out of that. And most recently, for the McClendon Compliance with the Second Judicial Court, the competency evaluation administrative support is also being paid out of that. So we pay those sorts of items that benefit indigent.
What is the total number of that?
The total number, it generates about 20, we're projecting for FY '20, about $21 million a year, and the total of, quasi-total of what I gave you is about $20 million.
Did you include a budget when you? I don't see anything. I'm looking for an attachment as to what the budget is or what the money was spent on.
No, I didn't include a budget because this was just the notice of intent to publish, that we would like to continue it. I have a budget.
Okay.
Every, every year, we produce a budget. It's part of our non-general fund funds, and it has its own budget.
Okay, so this is to intend to publish, and then there would be the final adoption?
Correct.
Okay, I, yeah, could you see that I get a budget? Appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, they, the budget will be, I can get it to you sooner, but we will be bringing it when we do the budget briefings to you, but I'll get it to you Thursday.
So what, how long is this published date? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
30 days.
30 days? Well, yeah, I don't need it immediately. If you're getting the other stuff for us, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? So I have a question, Shirley. Is this either or or both? We have, to approve the continuance as item 10A1, and then 10A2 would be to introduce for publication the amendment to the county code?
Yes, so the first thing is that you would approve the continuance, and then we, then you would approve the introduction for, of the publication.
What happens if we do one without the other? So what, say we were to defer 10A1 and vote on 10A2, which would be for, which would give us the opportunity to look at that budget and, as Commissioner O'Malley has asked.
I can pick up there, Madam Chair, if you like. We reviewed this all together, and this basically calls for you to do 10A1, which is approve the continuance of the, of the tax, and you have to do it every five years. But if you just approve it, as you're doing it now, which was done one time before, it doesn't appear in the code. And since it's a code enactment, we thought, and to be completely transparent, we'd also amend the code to show that it'd be continued in the code as well. So this is approving the continuance of the tax and then publishing that to the code, which is, you know, published and available to anybody that would be looking in the code to see it.
And I want to make a correction also. I misspoke on the budget. It's a 1/16th, so it's only 11 mil, around 11 million. I'm sorry.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
I wish 1/16th generated that. Okay, so if we approve 10, what happens if we approve 10A1 and not 10A2?
The, prior, they just approved 10A1 at one point in time, which was just to prove the continuance of the tax. We did however, look at it when we were reviewing it for reapproving it, and noticed that it didn't appear in the code, because in order for it to appear in the code, you'd have to do the section action item. I would, I would suggest that if you did do it, 10A1 only, it would reimplement it or keep it on the books, but in order for it to also appear on the books, you'd have to do the second part, which is do the actual amendment to the code. Because when you look at, like, New Mexico statute annotated, you look at the effective dates, and you can kind of follow the effective dates showing the, the continued effective date of the code enactment. Ironically, you have a continuance of this, but with an expired effective date on the code, which is, we just want to avoid that, that appearance, so that it looks more clear to the public what actually happened.
So say we want a little more time to consider this, so we could defer 10A1, pass 10A2, which would give us 30 days, and then we could do both at the same time. Is there a downside to that?
I don't think so. We just want to make sure we don't miss any deadline, which is June 30. Is that correct?
Yes, because if the, well, we're bringing the budget to you on April the 9, and this would be a part of the FY '20 budget, so that would delay approval of the budget, which would, if this isn't, if this tax isn't approved, then we're going to have to reduce expenditures somewhere else in the, to the tune of $10 million, because we won't be able to meet. I mean, contracts are in place, the medical contract's in place, it's been signed and approved by you all, so, and this was as a funding source, so we would, it would delay also the budget approval. We'd have to pull that out. We could move forward with a portion of the budget, but we'd have to pull out the other budget, the budget that relates to this. give us the opportunity to look at that budget and, as Commissioner O'Malley has asked.
I can pick up there, Madam Chair, if you like. We reviewed this all together, and this basically calls for you to do 10A1, which is approve the continuance of the, of the tax, and you have to do it every five years. But if you just approve it, as you're doing it now, which was done one time before, it doesn't appear in the code. And since it's a code enactment, we thought, and to be completely transparent, we'd also amend the code to show that it'd be continued in the code as well. So, this is approving the continuance of the tax and then publishing that to the code, which is, you know, published and available to anybody that would be looking in the code to see it.
And I want to make a correction also. I misspoke on the budget. It's a 1/16, so it's only 11 mil, around 11 million. I'm sorry.
I was gonna, that was gonna be my next question.
Yeah.
I wish 1/16 generated that. Okay. So, if we approve 10, what happens if we approve 10A1 and not 10A2?
The, prior, they just approved 10A1 at one point in time, which was just to prove the continuance of the tax. We did, however, look at it when we were reviewing it for reapproving it, and noticed that it didn't appear in the code, because in order for it to appear in the code, you'd have to do the section action item. I would, I would suggest that if you did do it, 10A1 only, it would reimplement it or keep it on the books, but in order for it to also appear on the books, you'd have to do the second part, which is do the actual amendment to the code. Because when you look at, like, New Mexico statute annotated, you look at the effective dates, and you can kind of follow the effective dates showing the, the continued effective date of the code enactment. Ironically, you have a continuance of this, but with an expired effective date on the code, which is, we just want to avoid that, that appearance, so that it looks more clear to the public what actually happened.
So, say we want a little more time to consider this. So, we could defer 10A1, pass 10A2, which would give us 30 days, and then we could do both at the same time. Is there a downside to that?
I don't think so. We just want to make sure we don't miss any deadline, which is June 30th. Is that correct?
Yes. Because if the, well, we're bringing the budget to you on April the 9th, and this would be a part of the FY '20 budget. So, that would delay approval of the budget, which would, if this isn't, if this tax isn't approved, then we're gonna have to reduce expenditure somewhere else into the tune of $10 million, because we won't be able to meet. I mean, contracts are in place, the medical contract's in place, it's been signed and approved by you all, so, and this was as a funding source, so, we would, it would delay also the budget approval. We'd have to pull that out. We could move forward with a portion of the budget, but we'd have to pull out the other budget, the budget that relates to this.
Okay. I want to move deferral of 10A1.
Okay. I will second that. Any questions or comments? Let me just clarify. So, if we were to defer, if we were to vote on that at our first meeting in April, approve the 1/16, 10A1, that would still give enough time to incorporate it into the budget?
We may have to...
You could give us a budget with it and a budget without it, right?
Right. What I would do is make it a separate motion, but if it's not approved, I probably withdraw the approval of the budget, because we would have to figure out how to fund all of these items.
Okay. Understood. All right. We have a motion and a second to defer item 10A1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. All right. I move we approve 10A2, which would be the introduction for publication of amendment to county code concerning this very same tax.
Second.
Second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
And for the record, I have Commissioner Casada on the line.
Oh. Welcome, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you.
How did, how did you vote on that last one?
I, I'm, I could barely hear you, and I came in late on that, so I think I'm just gonna abstain, because I wasn't able to hear all of them.
All right. So, we, that, that passes on a four to zero vote with one abstention from Commissioner Casada. All right. We're now on to, we have no resolutions, so we're on to 12A, design-build project of Alvarado Square. I move approval for discussion purposes.
I think they want to do approval.
And a second from Commissioner Talbert, Madam County Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So, what you have before you is the approval for the design-build project of the Alvarado Square renovation. First, I'd like to say that we've been through a lengthy process since 2000, in 2008, we were actually talking about entertaining the county having its own building. In 2016, we solicited an RFP to identify various locations. In the spring of 2017, we did our due diligence for Phase 1 of Alvarado Square, so that we were familiar with what we were getting into. In May of 2017, we purchased the Alvarado Square building for $2.7 million. In the summer of 2017, we contracted with the process consultant and the programming architect. In April of 2018, the procurement ordinance was approved, and what this did is it enabled us to proceed with the design-build method of procurement, and we can get into that if you would like to a little bit later. In May of 2018, the RFQ was issued, the request for qualifications, and June of 2018, the contract with the, we contracted with a security consultant, because as we know, security is a very important issue for this kind of facility. And in August of 2018, the RFP for this project was issued, and in March of 2019, now, we've got the design-build contract agenda item before you. So, I just want to reemphasize that, you know, this initiative was, was to reduce the financial and the physical footprint of Burnley County, and we want to be accessible to the public, and we want this, we want county operations to be convenient for the public and functional for them and for county staff as well. So, everybody being in one building, one, kind of a one-stop shop like we keep referring to. I also want to, to bring up the fact that we did, we are, we would like to move forward with the, the commission chambers, so it's a, it's going to be a new ground-up building adjacent to the main building. It'll feature a shared, secure entrance with the main building. Funding the chambers was part of the approved November 18 GO bond package, and the single-story building will be 12,000 square feet and will include 200 seats. And again, I wanted to ensure you all, Commissioners, because we always talk about being accessible to the public, and one of the, what, one of the things that you had asked for us is you wanted this chambers to be accessible to the public and usable, so that we could, it wouldn't just be for commission meetings, but it could be for meeting space for the public to utilize. So, the design-build contract, this is a huge decision, and we realize that. We're talking about $45,770,000 plus gross receipts tax. Again, this includes the commission chambers, it includes a million dollars for security, and it includes all furnishings for the building. This where, the square foot costs, so for renovations, what we are doing, it's costing our taxpayers $142 a square foot. This is for a 282,000 square foot building. New construction would cost $300 a square foot. The new commission chambers is, because it's new construction, is about $300 a square foot. So, the schedule, anticipated schedule is January 15th, 2021, for the main building to be complete, and March 12th, 2021, for the commission chambers. One of the areas of concern, and, and I want to say I do appreciate you relaying your concerns to us, you know, prior to tonight's meeting, a few of them, but one of them, I know that you wanted to see a clinic, and we talked about this, for, for our employees. So, we have programmed a space for a clinic for a future build-out to be, so this is just a medical clinic, so if anybody wants to get their blood pressure checked, flu shots or things of that nature, they can go in, and it'll cut down on people taking sick leave, and people will be at work more often, and hopefully will be more productive. You also had, we also talked very, very early on about a childcare facility, and we did look into that. So, basically, the CYFD has regulations, and so one of the regulations is, is that the children would have an outside area to play, to play in, like a playground. And so, when we looked into it, what we wanted is this one-stop shop, so we have, the idea was, was for the first floor to have, would be for the customers, to be for customer service. So, we didn't really have much room. I think the other concern was each child, we're supposed, there's regulations, again, 35, we have to provide 35 square feet per child. And, and then there, you have to, so you, and then you have to separate the children by age group. So, there, you know, and rightfully so. There's concerns, and it made it a little bit, a little complicated for us. So, what we're doing is, we're, we've contacted, and we're making contact and trying to find other places around the vicinity of the building that would be able to provide these childcare services. So, doesn't mean it's off the, off the table, but I'm just letting you know what we're doing right now at this point. And I have staff here to, to answer any questions that you have, and, and just know that we all realize, this is a huge decision for you all to make, and I know that you want to do right by the taxpayers, and we understand that. So, we're here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, County Manager Bach, I appreciate it. The gentleman who had public comment regarding the process of the RFP, I, I think it'd be important maybe for all of our listeners if Lisa or Dinah could walk everyone through, because we've been following, at least in my six years on the commission, the same process for any of our projects that we put forth in the county in terms of how we open up for open information and open meetings acts and things of that nature. So, I'm not sure that this one is any different or unique in, in the fact that individuals could not see exactly what was happening until it was actually awarded. So, if you wouldn't mind, if maybe Lisa could walk through that process, that way everyone who's watching and everyone in the audience can fully understand that we're not doing anything different this time, and if we are, then I stand corrected, and Lisa will correct me right now, and that would be my first time. But I'm pretty sure that we've been following the same process for a long time, and so it's not a situation where we're not transparent or we're not letting people see something, it's just we're not at that place in the project and process yet.
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, I am here to answer questions, but I'm going to have Ms. Dinah, Procurement and Business Services Director, answer questions, and I'll be here to assist as well.
Madam Chair, Stevens, Commissioners, I will answer your questions. One of the things that has to do with disclosure of offers is actually outlined in the document. This was in the RFP document, and all of the process is fully disclosed in both the RFQ and the RFP processes. The difference, distinct difference between design-build and let's just say, RFP, because that's what we're doing here, is that there is a request for qualifications, and then it goes into an RFP process. That process was, again, outlined in detail in both documents, as to the fact that it was going to be a two-phased approach, the fact that the RFP contents and submittals were going to be kept confidential until the award occurred, and that is no different than any RFP that we put out. That's, that's the standard process for a request for proposal. When you look at a request for bids, that, that basis of award is based on the lowest bid, and those bids are opened publicly, and therefore, everybody knows what the lowest bid is. Anybody can ask at the bid opening for construction, let's say, who the subcontractors are, and that, that information is disclosed immediately. In a request for proposal process, it is not available, and nothing that is involved in any related contents are kept confidential until the award occurs. The protest process is such that, and is also included in the RFP document, a protest can occur 15 days after the facts or knowledge of the occurrence. So, let's say, on an award, if, in this particular case for Alvarado, the award is made, anybody who is involved in the procurement process could protest and has 15 days to do so. They have to detail what the protest basis is on. A determination will have to be made by me as to whether or not that protest has merit. I will look to the procurement code and the procurement ordinance, because both actually were in effect at the time, and I will make a final determination in consultant, consultation with the legal department. Is there any further questions on the process?
No, I appreciate that, and I think, and I'll just paraphrase for my own simplicity. So, the process we followed for an RFP is the process we've followed in the county for as long as we've had that process in place, correct?
Yes.
The confidentiality of the process is sanctified in the actual proposal when we put it together, starting with the RFQ and moving to the RFP.
Correct.
And then at the end, if we award this contract, then the constituency, anyone who wants to appeal that decision, can do so within 15 days, providing you written documentation of the reason for their appeal.
Minor correction there?
Please.
Anybody who was involved in the procurement process?
In the procurement process, okay. So, anybody who bid or participated, okay.
Participated, yes.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you both very much.
And, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, at that point, so if the commission were to approve the contract tonight, tomorrow, our procurement file would be open to the public for viewing in order to review, to see whether or not anybody has any issues or they'd like to protest.
So, them not, I'm sorry, so them not having access to it today, or before today, or before last week, or before the week after, is not unique? That is how the process has worked and does work?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Commissioner Talbert, yes, that is best practices. That is a practice in RFPs that is followed by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing all over the United States. That is best practices. To protect the integrity of the procurement, you protect the contents of the, the procurement process up until such time the contract is awarded. At that point in time, the file is open for, for disclosure.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Hey, Madam Chair. Lisa and Dinah, while you're here, you mentioned that the, this is a, I don't, is this the first design-build project we've done?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, this is different. It has a different approach, and the idea is to shorten the length of time between, as you begin, typically in a, maybe a construction project, you'd get an architect involved, or you do an RFP for an architect, you use an in-house architect, and then you'd go to construction bid. You'd do the, in some cases, the lowest bid, whatever, as you said, or you'd look at the, and so that's a different process. I think that's important, that this is a different process. Now, the other thing is, we did, as you said, we did approve the process. We went through the, and now, and I'll be honest with you, I, I feel like I didn't do my due diligence, since I'm not really understanding this process, because I felt that not only was it confidential to everybody, it was confidential that we weren't even able to see. We didn't see anything until we got a contract in front of us, and I still don't even have this contractor's proposal. We don't have any copies of it. We don't know anything. I mean, basically, we, we ended up with, here's the contract, here's the, I've got a contract, copy of a contract, but I don't have any kind of proposal before us, because that's confidential. So, but we're the client. This is where I'm getting frustrated, and that's where I got frustrated the other day. We're the client, because we have financial responsibility for this project. We have financial responsibility for pretty much everything, as the county commissioner, as the board of commissioners, and I feel like I was in the dark all this whole process. So, this is different. It's not typical. I think that's important to note. I'm not saying you didn't follow the code or the procurement process as was outlined, and I, I, but I really, I'm really surprised that, that, you know, we get to this point, and there was no communication and no dialogue, again, considering that supposedly, we're the client. So, that's the difference between what we're doing now and what we've done on other projects. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, yes, we are doing a design-build process, and what I was, the point I was trying to make is in the RFP process in of itself. Again, the pre-qualification process is something that goes hand-in-hand with design-build.
Right.
It has to do with qualifications and performance and things of that nature, and those things are looked at during the RFQ process. The distinct difference between the design-build and a regular RFP is in the, is on the design-bid-build process. You do, as a matter of fact, put out a solicitation, a formal solicitation for an architect, and along with that, architect is subconsultants who are the engineers, et cetera, and that is a request for proposal process. That process is closed, and, and everything related to those documents is confidential until such time award is made. The design documents, along with any specifications and drawings, are made part of the contract just as the submittal, and anything that was submitted by the contractor now for the design-build is also made part of the contract. Those documents are available for review. The, and then what happens with a regular design-bid-build is then we do a formal solicitation that is a bid.
Right.
And that bid is open for public inspection, and that process has an independent architect and an independent contractor, and that's the distinct difference.
Right.
In the design-build process, you have one process, one contractor, and a team that collaborates together to come up with the best solution and the best of what's in the county's interest for whoever is doing the design-build project. It's a team... It's a team approach, and we have a lot of say and input as we move forward. And that's the benefit of having a design-build project.
Right. So, and you've got the design and the build together, instead of design, and then you do the build?
Right.
No, I get that.
But what I, I guess my point is, again, that the RFP process in a design-bid-build is also closed for public inspection, and any contents related to that solicitation is a closed, is closed until the award is made. That's no different.
Well, okay, I'm not going to argue with that about, because that's not my understanding of doing something different than a design-build. Because when you go out for an RFP for a build or construct, right, you're basically talking about a bid process. And you just mentioned that that was a different process.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so, I'm not going to get into the semantics of it, but it is a different process. And that's why, and so, I guess, I really feel that this, this design-build has a big flaw in it. And the biggest flaw is that the client doesn't get to have any kind of idea what's going on until we've got a contract right before us. And we, again, I don't even have the, and that would, that would be nice to have, is to have their proposal before us, so we know what it is, because we don't even know that. We weren't even privy to that. That's been my front, and I'm going to go ahead and let other folks speak, and I will wrap up my comments.
Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. I do have some questions, because I want to understand how this process works. And I feel like that I'm at a, very much a disadvantage, only being on this job two and a half months, where there's been a lot of background. And yet, I also hear that people who have been here a while don't understand it either. So I guess my first question is, if, if we approve this tonight, then how would it work to, as I understand this design-build, that it's an ongoing process? And so we would have some say, which we should, in what, in how it is designed and built, and what's there? You mentioned the childcare facility clinic. I would love to see a little workout room. Also, solar panels. So, and how would that work? At what point do we have a say? And do we get some sort of vote on that? How does that intersection work between us and the design?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Mary Murnane, Fleet and Facilities Department Director, Burnley County. Once the contract is approved, then we have several months in which we can work, continue to work with the design-build team to identify things that either need to come into the project and/or, or come out. When the project is coming to this point for award, it's, a certain percentage of it is sort of well-defined, and quite a bit of it is still yet to be defined, and that's part of the interactive process. So for example, how we're going to address some of the system improvement, HVAC, electrical, mechanical, a lot of those need to be fairly well-sorted out, because they have quite large, in this project in particular, large cost implications. Other things, who goes on what floor, how exactly we organize the customer contact center, what amenities maybe are determined to be more important versus less important in terms of the overall project. There is a gym identified in the basement. Again, with the daycare, the question of the daycare, one of the big issues was is that you have to have two means of egress, which means it had to be on, on the first floor, and we couldn't really make that work with, if a priority was meeting those customer service needs. So that was a trade-off of needs. And always trying to put the goals of the project of, you know, improve customer service, better efficiency for the county, reducing our footprint, those sorts of things. Trying to go back and say, okay, where does this fit in that? With respect to the solar panels, we did look at solar on this project. PNM has very strict rules about what they will allow on downtown buildings for solar. They will allow half of your minimum load at any given time. So as a, as an example, at the convention center, which was recently remodeled, the maximum ability for solar at that facility was 30 kilowatts, which, you know, is about $150,000 worth of solar. So it's certainly possible to do it here, but we also have to pay then for an additional meter. And the rates at a larger building, the utility rates that we pay at a larger building are typically less on a per-kilowatt-hour basis than at our smaller buildings. So if we're only able to do that amount of solar, tends to make more sense to do that kind of project at a smaller building. For example, a fire station where the payback is seven or nine years versus a 20-plus-year payback at the Alvarado Square Building. At the MDC, as a case in point, that building's a 24/7 facility. So on the weekends, we're generating, we get a lot of benefit from that project, whereas an office building doesn't have that same level of necessarily of benefit, you know, on a 24/7 basis. So those are some of the considerations that went into what to do as part of the project. If the Commission decides that we should do solar on this project, then we will figure out what comes out and what goes in, and we'll do solar on this project. I think the opportunities that we have now are really to sit down with the architect and the contractor together and say, how do we get this? This is what we want. How do we achieve this? And then come up with those solutions together. I would say that we have probably the next three months to be able to try to make that work. And after that, changes start to have costs, much, much bigger cost impacts. And we really want to kind of all agree and move forward on some of these, the details and, you know, visual impact, what's it going to look like, what are the furnishings like, those sorts of things. We want to reach some agreement on those and sort of agree that we'll, we'll get to that point, and then we'll move forward with what we've decided on, because changes that are made during construction are considerably more expensive than the changes that we can make now in the, in the design process. We're roughly at a schematic design level, which means that there's a lot of opportunity for additional input.
May I ask another question? Thank you. Is there some place in our agenda packet tonight that breaks out the costs of what we're already paying for with this contract? And so we would know what would be extra then?
So I wish I had brought Cherie's binder. But the contract is comprised of the original RFP, or RFQ, so the request for qualifications, and then the, any of the programming documents that our consultants, we had a group of consultants that basically developed the programming, what do we need, what do we want? What do we want in this project? What do we have to have in terms of space, in terms of other things? That, and then the, so that became a part of the RFP. And then the RFP responses, which are what the contractor said they would do in addition to anything that we negotiated at a, kind of at a negotiations meeting, all become part of the contract. So basically, the contract is about this thick. And Lisa's giving me something with some small print. So we have the budget, but you're kind of asking what's in, what's out, right? So let me-
Yeah, it's a lot of money, and as a steward of the taxpayers' money, it's very important for me to know what we'd be paying for and what we, and what would be extra.
Right, but the question really is what's in, what's out. Okay, so what's in is all new plumbing, one new chiller, entirely new LED lighting, new ceiling tiles, new flooring, new carpets, new furniture, anything that we need to make the one-stop-shop area work, which may include bulletproof glass as well as the, you know, the configuration of that area. A whole new IT center, whole new data center, security, all the security cameras, key card access. Well, I mentioned furniture, and I will probably have to have Cherie come up and add some of those things. But to your point, the programming document identified everything that had to be in the, in the project. And then when the offers came back with their proposals, they basically said, for the money that you have, we can do these things. And then that's kind of where some of the negotiation happened, as far as what order would not be included. Do you have that? Okay. Can you project it or no?
And so if it's in our agenda packet, can you tell us what page it's on, or it's not in here? Okay.
It's not in the agenda packet. But we can certainly get it to you.
Oh, I didn't know if you had something to present.
Oh, well, in the, I had a very brief PowerPoint presentation that talked about just the project in general, some of the energy efficiency questions that were raised, ways that we're addressing energy efficiency in the project. But the overall, typically, the schedule of values is then developed once the contract's executed, and we get a line item for kind of everything that we're going to be doing. And we can, that's when we can start to look at, if something needs to come out, then where do we, kind of where do we take that from? If there's a particular question about something being in or out, we'd be happy to try to, to try to answer that. I think the daycare got taken out, the solar got taken out, again, largely for the practical implications. And beyond that, when it really got down to the selection between the two firms that were shortlisted, it was really a question of whether we thought the firm that was selected by the selection committee would kind of address the whole comprehensive package versus maybe being particularly strong in one area or particularly weak in, or a little weak in another area. We thought on balance that we were going to get the architecture, the systems, I think the team relationship, and the value with the contractor who was selected. I would add that oftentimes, design-build is mentioned as being a more timely process for construction. But I would say that the other thing that's been noted is that it typically results in a 6% reduction in cost on a, on a unit cost for, for design-build. And in part, that's because you're working collaboratively, and you're not, if there's an issue between what the builder wants to do and what the, what the plans say, then the architect and the builder figure it out, because they're on the same team, versus sort of some finger pointing about how we, you know, how does one move, move forward? So those are kind of some of the advantages of the design-build, is that it tends to result in a better value, meaning that we get what we, what we asked for. And I think that's one of the reasons we're excited about doing that with, with this particular project.
And I appreciate all of your hard work on it. I see that, you know, you have worked hard on it. I wish that I felt as confident in just how this works and, you know, how it would work going forward in having us, you know, really represent the needs and goals and values of our communities and our constituents.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, Cherie McKenzie, I'm the project manager of the Fleet and Facilities Department. I'd like to elaborate on that just a little bit more. With our programming architect, we established, they also had engineering consultants on board, we established a 361-page document of our design criteria. It detailed from, I have the list of all the spaces, the window treatments, the fire suppression system. It outlined all of those things that we needed in the building. And then we said, here's our budget. Can you give us all of those things for the budget? And there has been some back and forth between both of the RFP teams to kind of come to an agreement as to what, which of those items are in and which of those items were out. There were very few that we actually had to take out. But it's a comprehensive document that outlines everything that is in the project, if that helps at all.
You have the floor. You have as many questions as you wish. Commissioner Piscotti has the floor, but Commissioner Kizada was going to go to you next. Done? All right, Commissioner Kizada.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. One, during the RFQ process, when did they add the Commission chambers building to the RFQ? And to me, as I look through all of this, I see two different jobs. I see a renovation, and then I see a Commission chambers building. Why are they together? Why aren't they separate? Why wasn't there a different RFQ and an RFP put out for the Commission chambers building? And it was separated from the renovation building? And was that added through the RFQ process, or was it added in the RFP process? Could somebody answer those questions for me?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Kizada, in the original request for qualifications, there was, there were two items, renovation of 40-year-old facility that can adequately house approximately 900 Burnley County staff and the current needs of a functional county government. And then two was creation of iconic facility expressing the mission of the county and for the Commission chambers, which incorporates employee well-being and facilitates public service. So they were both included in the RFQ process. In other words, the firms had to show that they had experience in those, those things, both those things. Experience and staffing and personnel and all the things that go into the qualifications-based evaluation.
Would it be speaking out of turn to say that I would prefer to have those done separately? You know, as a government entity, we are, you know, we are responsible for supporting as many local, local businesses as we possibly can. And for me, I think by doing, combining those two things, we have kind of just gave, put everything in one boat, and we're not doing what I think we should be doing. And is that making sure that, you know, we provide jobs for, you know, many, as many different types of businesses as long as they qualify? From my understanding, through the RFQ process, you had five people who qualified. And then, and then you took it down to two during the RFP process. And for me, I just have a little heartburn that, you know, we're doing it all in one whack. When I look at these as two separate kind of projects for myself. I don't know how the other commissioners look at it, but that's something that I see.
So Commissioner, with respect to separating the projects, the issues that we saw with those largely had to do with two things. One was staging on the site. So if we were going to be renovating the one building, we kind of need that space where the chambers is supposed to go to be available for that staging. And then we need that chambers to get constructed fairly quickly thereafter, because otherwise, you've got a construction site and you have people that can't get into your building because you don't have, you don't have a way for them to get in. I would add that the other reason that we wanted the chambers and this building to go together was that we wanted a unified building. We didn't really want two separate buildings. We wanted a single entry. We wanted to have one security checkpoint, because that was something that came out of the, the security evaluations. We wanted to be able to make the two buildings be unified, and doing that under two separate contracts and two separate processes- contracts and two separate processes, in our belief would have been extremely difficult because what do you do at that joint? How do you determine how to handle that joint? What happens when you're trying to have security, but you're building half, you're building the other half of the, of the building? So those are the reasons that we unified this as, as one. The chambers building estimated cost is roughly $6 million. So the bulk of the building, the bulk of the construction is the renovation of, of the Alvarado project. And I guess I would add that when you look at the, our economic development staff looked at the, the economic benefits just of the project in general and the, there's the direct impacts of the jobs created and the, the benefits to those directly involved. And then there's the impacts to, to the community and to, to suppliers, to other vendors and to, you know, additional subcontractors, et cetera, et cetera, for those people that are involved in the, in the evaluation of the, or in the, in looking at the economic benefits of the overall project. But from, as a practical matter, it seemed not in our best interest to have two separate contracts for two separate buildings. We wanted, we wanted to try to pull them together so it really was the building where people know where to go and they know where the entrance is and we have unified security and there's a relationship between the chambers and the, the Alvarado building.
Well, with all due respect, I've seen many different people working together on same properties and it happens anyway when they do subcontracting work. I think that this is basically, you know, a matter of communication. But thank you for that information. I just, I just don't 100% agree with that. So now the building we are in now, what, what happens to the building that we're in now? I've been getting emails and asking that question. Do, from my understanding, we, we own half that building? What happens to, to that building and how do we, or do we ever recoup what we have in that building?
So Commissioner, and I'll defer to purchasing if, if I get stuck, but Madam Chair, Commissioner Kazada, the county owns half of the, half of this building, of this one Civic Plaza building and the appraised value of that, can I say that? The appraised value is approximately $24 million. So the county's interest in that would be $12 million. So the city, per the JPA that dates back to 1976 or '82, somewhere around there, allows the city the right of first refusal for, for this property. It's our understanding that they're interested because they're looking at doing something similar, which is consolidation out of some other facilities. So my understanding is, is that there would be some kind of negotiation to figure out how we reach an agreement on the county exiting this building and the city taking over the, the county's ownership interest.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Talbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One comment I'd, I'd make about the solar, so if, if we were moving in this building thinking we were only going to be there for a short period of time, then I would follow your logic of a seven or nine-year payback. But considering that we've been in this building since at least 1976, so my math is, what, 30, 40, 50, 40 years, whatever, and I'm a banker, God, I can't believe that, at least 40 years. I would say that 20-year payback on solar for a building that we're going to be in probably at least 40 years, probably 50 or 60, doesn't sound too bad. It, it does when you say 20 years, you're like, oh my God, right? But I mean, if you're going to be in a building, you consider it to be the county building of the future and forever, then I would not get so scared away with, with 20-year payback on that. Again, leaving it up to you as to determine with the contractor, if that even makes sense. I do find it rather odd that we're getting into an old PNM building and PNM has regulations on their own solar on their own old building. So anyway, that's another story, another question, another time. But be that as it may, I would not be scared off by the 20 years, at least if that's what we're talking about for that amount of money. So I would reconsider that. I do think if it's the will of the commission tonight, and I, I hope it will be, it sounds like we have a window of three months. If we approve this contract, we have change order opportunities, we have some definite questions here where all of us are saying, show me the money, right? Show me what it looks like, that we have a little time to do that. And it would be my suggestion that we, that we get the contract approved, that we then set up quickly because the timeframe will start, the clock will start ticking. With each commissioner who wants to have some input and some understanding, right, of, hey, what are you guys spending? And that, that sounds like we all do, right? It's important. It's $45 million. It's not like we write those checks every day. But I think we do that, and we do that with intent and purpose. And then we, we all, I would feel or I would hope that each of us in our own way, with whatever level of confidence we have already, would feel better with, with where we're at, understanding that, you know, the childcare thing, if that's important for someone, it's, it's truly important to understand why that can happen and you gave a few examples tonight. Or if solar is really what we should be doing, well, you know, again, I just made a comment that I thought 20 years wasn't too bad in terms of the payback because we're going to be in that building, I'm going to say it, for at least 50 years. I don't see us moving anytime soon. I'll be long dead, but that's okay. You know, the, the building, oh, 50, I'm 55, that may be 105, shit, man. I mean, excuse me, stuff, man. I mean, if I can make it 105, I'll make the Guinness Book. But be that as it may, after having two architects. But I, I think we can go down that path and really get into a place where we, we feel more comfortable. I think each of us has their own level of, like I said, confidence in where we're at with the process, but I think all of us, and I'm not trying to speak for everybody, just want to see an outline that says, hey, this, this is what it's going to cost, this is where it's going to go. Let us provide our input and see where we go. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of questions. What's the benefit of doing, using a design-build strategy?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll start and then Mary might have to take over because she's more of the subject matter expert in the construction piece of it. But the benefit of a design-build has to do with cost, it has to do with the partnership. That's the main point or piece of a design-build contract is the partnership that you have with the contractor and the architect. It's all one team. Whereas in a design-bid-build process, there are separate contracts with the architect and a separate contract with, with the contractor. And us as the owner do not really have much say as far as what design looks like and things like that. I mean, we have input on the programming and schematic design, we review things, but in a design-build process, we are at the table constantly talking to the contractor and talking to the architect and giving them our input as to what it is we want. And that's, that is one of the biggest benefits of a design-build project. We get to be there on, at the table and we make the decisions with the contractor and architect. Mary, you want to add anything?
Mary.
I would just add, Madam Chair, that one of the items we struggle with quite a bit in construction is, is low bid, right? So you have low bid and sometimes that doesn't work out particularly well because the low bid is the low bid for a reason. And so what really excited us about this, especially for the future home of Burnlel County, was the idea that we're seeking best value, right? So we're not, we're seeking the, the building and the team that are going to meet our needs and, and that if we have things that we run into, that we're going to work collaboratively to resolve those rather than having change orders ad nauseam and/or legal disputes. I mean, we've, you know, in the past, in my six years here as the department director, we've had three or four legal disputes that have gone, you know, threatened to go to settlement or have had to go, go to mediation. And you don't end up getting the things fixed that you want fixed. So here we have that process, that opportunity in the process to say, how do we, how do we resolve this if something comes up versus the architect saying that the contractor built it incorrectly and the contractor saying that the architect's plans were terrible? In, in this case, that risk is shared by them. So they, there's an impetus for them to, to work it out and for us to work it out with them because at the end of the day, what we want is the best building we can get for our money.
So I had, I had asked staff a question at one point in time about the cost, which the cost per square foot sounded high relative to other construction projects. And the response was, the, there's a benefit that we don't pay for change orders, that this design-build process would, would eliminate the change order process, that the, that the architect and the builder take all of the risk. Is that accurate?
Architect and the builder are taking all the risk for the existing conditions and in fact, we specifically discussed that. There's something, you had plenty of opportunity to get in there and rip stuff apart. If you miss something, it's, it's on you. If we as the county decide that we want to add a second story to the chambers, then that's on us because that's not part of this current contract. What typically happens is that if things need to be changed, we figure out what the give and take is within, within the project scope. Or if it's significant enough and it's owner-driven, then we, we say, okay, we as the, as the county have determined that we really want a daycare center and we're going to figure out how to have, you know, a patio access on the second floor or something, then, then that's something that the county has decided that's outside of the original, the original scope. But in terms of the existing conditions, what they propose to do, what they're supposed to deliver to us, that's all incorporated in, again, the, the RFP and the programming. So those are kind of the two types of change orders. But one tends to be driven by the owner wanting something different. In this case, we said, here's our budget, tell us what you can give us, and that's what they did. So that's what they're, they're obligated to.
Okay. So there's been a lot of conversation tonight that there will be ample opportunity for commission input. What rises to the level of a change order that would then increase the cost over the, what is in tonight's contract?
My take on that, Commissioner, and I am certainly open to conversation about this, but my take on that would be, is, is if we as the, the county want something so substantially different and more expensive that we can't figure out where to take it from somewhere else in the project, right? So half a million dollars for new electrical panels. Do we have to do that right now? Maybe not, right? But if, and so maybe that becomes something that's a give and take. But if we're saying that we want, you know, something that has a value of $4 million added in, then where does that $4 million come from? And are we in agreement that those changes are, that we all accept those changes? So, I mean, it's kind of similar to your house, right? Like you have a budget and then it's, you can have the really nice tile or you can have the less nice tile and still get your fixtures, right?
Okay. Let me see. Oh, so a while back, about 18 months ago, this commission passed a resolution asking that energy efficiency and renewable energy be prioritized in this project? And how did you act on that resolution? Can you tell me like what's in the plan that honors the commission's request?
So Commissioner, when we developed the programming document, which again is kind of the, we had an architect and we had a mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, they had people that specialized in wayfinding, signage, things like that, some security, IT for the commission chambers. So all of these technical experts developed our programming document. And our programming document defines the things that we're going to require as, that have to be in, in the building. And a lot of those relate back to particular standards, ASHRAE standards for energy efficiency levels, LED lighting is a requirement in the building. So the way that we did it was we said that the building has to do this and then we left it to them as part of their proposal to tell us how the building would, would do that. So that's really where we incorporated the, the energy efficiency requirements as well as the sustainability requirements. Because if you remember the, the agenda item, the resolution, as I recall, was about sustainability. So it wasn't just about the energy, it was about being in a downtown location similar to what Commissioner O'Malley was talking about where we've made a commitment to downtown, but the advantage of downtown is there's existing infrastructure, there's transit routes, there's, there's other things that support the building being there. So that's part of the sustainability. And then the energy efficiency components were largely outlined in the, the performance specifications of the programming document.
Thank you. So I think someone tonight raised the issue of whether there's going to be any kind of solar panels on this building. And it sounds, in the proposal that went to, that's in the current contract, that has not been included.
No, but we can certainly add it.
Okay. And again, that, that's something that I would hope would, you know, that seems to me like a policy decision where, that the commission should be offered those options? Okay, so you can have solar on, you can have renewable energy or, or, you know, commitment to renewable energy in some way, but it's going to come at a cost.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's our, our role as commissioners to make those decisions, particularly in light of, you know, you know that this is a priority for me. And the reason that I introduced that resolution was to say that it's not just me, it's the commission as a whole. And I really take that very seriously and I think that we all do. And so for, to come back and realize that that decision has already been made, and I realize it's not irrevocable, but there had been a decision made, well, we don't want to pay for that. I, I just have concerns about the process through which that decision was made. All right, that's the end of my questions. Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, and I express my frustration about not being involved until essentially we have a contract before us, not having a, any kind of real idea in terms of what the contractor has proposed. To me, it's kind of like when you go buy a car, right? You go in there and you, you look at a car and, and then you sit down and you start negotiating about a car. It's like, well, you want air conditioning or that's going to be this much? You want a certain kind of thing in the car? Are you going to know fancy radio? And that's going to be this much. So then at the end of the day, you got, you got, you know what you're buying. If somebody told me, well, we want you to sign a contract for this car and then we'll negotiate the other stuff later, I wouldn't do it. And that's what we've got before us. You're saying, well, let's, let's move this contract forward and then we'll negotiate what's, what we want later. Well, that, that's not the way I, that's not the way I see this. I don't think that's, that's a good way to do business. I want to know what this is going to cost with the things that we want in there. But we were left out of this process, so we don't know what's in there, really. What you're telling us is in there. I don't have a budget, I don't have any kind of proposal or nothing. This is like buying a pig in a poke, as far as I'm concerned. I'm not saying that the, you didn't follow us a process, but I want to know what it is at the end of the day. I want to know what it is we are buying and what we're paying for. And I'm not going to agree to a contract that doesn't have the things that we want in it and a cost analysis of what that's going to be. I'm not going to support that. I don't know if anybody has anything else to say, but...
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Piscotti.
I have a question about the endpoint. It seems like with design-build, it could, it just is so amorphous that it just keeps going on and changing. When is the endpoint to this project? Like, let's say, when do we call it done? Like, let's say we move in and I'm like, you know what, I'd really love to have a greenhouse on the roof. Would that then become a new project or how do we know when it's done?
So, Madam Chair, Commissioner, the project's done when they've met all the criteria that have been identified in the, in the performance, performance spec. And then, and we have this frequently with, with new construction. Something comes in after the fact, you're in, you're in, you're in your place, you're in your house and you realize, oh, I really wish that the light switch had been here and not over there. And then we come in and we, we change that. But that's not typically on the design-build firm because it wasn't part of the original agreement, it wasn't part of the plans that we sign off on. And so the difference, I would say, in the design-build is that you're kind of signing off on packets of plans, so there'll be a, a group of decisions that have to be made that, that need to be made in order for... order for things to move forward. And then additional decisions kind of come after that. So it's a little bit more of a, kind of a series of design packages that result in, then in, in construction. Um, and basically, if, if it was in the, you know, in the agreement, in the performance spec and in the RFP, that they would do these things, then, um, then they have to do it. And if it's not in there, then we either negotiate it in or we, we do it at a, at a later date. And again, with, with construction projects, that's not entirely unusual that there's something that comes up and then the building maintenance staff goes and does this other thing that, that, that they wanted because it wasn't in the plans. And it wasn't agreed to be done as part of the project. So there's always the opportunity to do more after the fact. Um, I think the disputes typically in construction come up when there's disagreement about whether someone met the, you know, met the conditions of their contract. And that's, you know, that, that could happen in this type of instance as well. But the fact that you've got the architect and the builder and the county as a, as a team trying to move this forward minimizes that more so than it does in, uh, the traditional design bid-build.
And so, again, it seems like the, the timeline keeps moving because if it were approved tonight, then we would have 90 days to, to come, to come up with, um, any kind of additions or changes or that the commission would be a part of?
Yeah. So the commission, um, would be a part of, you know, however it needs to be organized, would be a part of, um, reviewing the current design and saying what they want to be different. And then we figure out how we make that, make that work. Um, and then once those decisions are made, then we move forward with, with that plan.
Mm-hmm. So, so the, the door closes after 90 days of approval. Is that accurate? Or if I, next year for my birthday, I said, you know, if I said, I really want to have a greenhouse, can you add that in? Is the door shut at that point?
It could be added, yeah. No, it could be, it could be added, but that would, you know, my take on that would, that it would be an owner-driven change and there would be an additional cost. But it certainly could be, it certainly could be added because there's not currently a green. I mean, initially, we were hoping to be, to have the budget to put, um, like a green roof on top of the chambers and have some open space for staff and things like that. And it just, um, that, it just wasn't possible with the budget that we have. I mean, $142 a square foot sounds like a, a lot of, of money, um, but it is actually all in. So it includes all our design fees. There's no, there's no set, separate fees for design or engineering or anything like that. So that's the, the design and construction cost per square foot.
Okay. And I just have one final question that I just, I wouldn't feel complete if I didn't ask. Um, if this doesn't get approved tonight, if it gets deferred, then what's the downside of waiting until people are satisfied with the process and the goals of the building?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I, I don't know what staff is, I don't know what the process would be for doing something different than the formal RFP process. So I, I don't actually know the answer to, to that. I think we do have a very large concern about...
Yeah, no, my, my question was just if it were deferred, would there be, uh, a downside? I, I just want to hear for the record what the downside would be to that.
The downside that I see is that there's supposed to be additional, um, federal tariffs come in on, uh, at the end of March. And I think that, um, we've already seen that they, they've had an impact on, um, construction costs. And our concern would be that, that that would radically change what we would be able to do, um, and that the, um, with the budget that we have. And I don't, I can, I don't know if, um, anyone from HB or, or, Decker, Peric, Sabatini would like to add anything to that. But that would be my concern was, would be that, that delay because of those tariffs could have, um, potentially quite a large impact. Whereas you would think that two weeks maybe shouldn't matter that much. In this case, it might.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, another thing to take into consideration is the lease agreements that are involved. And also the id, the three items or, uh, the item that follows this agenda item are up for approval as well. They pretty much go hand in hand because there are dates included in those lease agreements. Um, and, you know, deferral, um, I know would probably concern who is in, the person who's interested in purchasing these properties from us. So I'd just like to add that.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to, first of all, I would like to have the proposal or the, um, the proposal from the team. Uh, I would like to have a hard copy of it. I think every commission should have a hard copy of it. I'd also like to see the budget. Uh, I, I am going to request a two-week deferral. And I would like the t, that the staff or whoever, the manager, to go back to the team and to look at what the costs are of some of the things we've asked for, uh, and what those would be so that when we make a decision, a final decision, I'm not saying, you know, because I know that everybody wants to move forward and so do I. I went to the building the other day. It's just sitting there. It's important that we, we made a decision. So I don't think two weeks is going to make, if, if the staff feels that they can get this done, and I don't know if you want to say county manager in time, so that we know what it is we are going to build and how much it's going to cost.
Madam Chairman, um, Chairwoman, Commissioner O'Malley, um, you know, this is a big decision. And so I really think that if, um, you're asking for two weeks, I don't think that's asking for a lot. I think we need to do our due diligence. I think we need to do what we ma, what makes you feel comfortable, what makes you, um, what makes the public feel comfortable with. And it, again, it's a big decision. So I think we just, we, we're willing to go back and, um, get you some numbers and, um, any other information that you need so that we can move forward. And I appreciate, I do appreciate your concerns and your questions. And I think they're all valid.
Can the chair move, uh, that we defer for two weeks?
I will second that. If we have any questions or comments about the deferral, that would take precedence over the motion to approve. Um, all right, we have a motion to defer this item for, until our next meeting, which would be about two weeks. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes, the motion to defer passes on a four to one vote. Um, and in light of that, I will move that we defer items 12, B, C, and D for two weeks. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and a motion and a second from Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes on a four to one. Um, and that ends tonight's business. Our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, March 26th, 2019, 5:00 PM, here in the Vincent E. Greego chambers. We will have a, um, budget hearing Thursday, March 28th, 8:00 AM, again, here in the Vincent E. Greego chambers. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.